Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Which items were open again?
So the items that are open for public comment are 1 through 4, 5 with the substitute resolution, 10 and 11, and 13 through 15.
Okay, so we have 1 through 4 are like various, you know, we've got like a school in CD4 and we've got like a bunch of units and such, you know, maybe we should make sure there's lots of stuff there. Um, let's see, we have item 5. Item 5 is a, um, motion from anti-unhoused bigot Officer Tracy Park, um, who spent her time before on council defending someone for discriminating against someone and using the N-word while doing so. Um, you know, banning RVs isn't going to, um, you know, going to solve anything, it's just, you know, making sure that, um, that Tracy's, um, you know, rich NIMBY sock puppet guys on Twitter, um, you know, don't have to see unhoused people. Um, and all, so it's just, you know, all their rich developer buddies and all that stuff. Um, it's nothing to do with solving anything, it's just that she hates unhoused people and just wants to make their life as miserable as possible. So definitely vote no on that. Uh, let's see, we have, um, removing properties from REAP. Um, yeah, landlords really, you know, mess up, they screw over their tenants and then, um, you know, it's so bad that the city tells them they have to fix it and then, maybe they do, maybe they don't, but you know, we just remove properties from REAP with no discussion and give the, um, and y'all give their, um, you know, your landlord friends their, um, big paychecks. Um, you know, thriving off just, you know, making sure that people have a, you know, place to, um, a roof over their head and a place to sleep at night and just exploiting that while making millions. Um, yeah. Not much on the agenda today, um, maybe, maybe you should have that emergency motion to change the council rules since you still haven't done that one yet.
Next speaker.
My name is Harriet Elliott. Um, I'm speaking on 2, and it doesn't say that 2, uh, floating bonds of $28,000 for the area, Mulholland Drive will be a replacement for the high school that we heard, um, on last Tuesday where 50 young people cried, some of them cried, that drug addicts are coming into their classroom. Um, I wonder, I listened to all of the council members and I was impressed. However, do you know, I'm wondering, are you credulous that somebody didn't allow drug addicts into that classroom in order to get, uh, movement in, uh, the CIA causes, uh, what do you call it? I'm sorry, I didn't think of this, how to say it. Uh, the CIA can cause, uh, social, uh, movement. And why would, why are people credulous enough to believe that-
Thank you.
Yes, it's nice you're going to actually release some properties from the REAP. I see council district 1's got something going and you know, and got a couple of them, like 12 and 13. Unisis is a hard worker. If Sadio had been here, he'd be out there getting his dick wet instead of working like he should. But Unisis works harder than Sadio, that's why she's on the council now. And what else do we have? I remember there was someplace you had a lot more. Oh, and by the way, something about the Flower Street thing on number 14, $35, they're changing the name and everything else, they're doing some hanky panky. But mind you folks, we're the ones getting fucked.
I'd like to speak on all items and non-agenda public comment, please.
So you have 3 minutes for the items.
How much time do I get? And I would like to also elaborate on item 5, which was reopened.
So you have 3 minutes for the items that are open for public comment.
So why running my time while you speak, Mr. Circle? See, um, regarding the dedicated Eastman, my understanding that Eastmans are a very difficult jargon of bullshit because of the category that it sits in. You have to define a, a, a line, a line that divides whether does it belong to the city of Los Angeles or does it belong to the individuals that you typically put a red escrow against them, lean on their properties, which I find unconstitutional and ridiculous, like the pink face up there who's not paying attention. Look at item number 2, Ramen. Ramen sitting next to Mr. Price. We're dealing with an expansion equipment, a furnishings for a new learning and innovation center at Mulholland Drive. Well, what's the purpose of that if you got people sleeping on the goddamn streets? Look at item number 3, Mr. Rogue. Rodriguez and Ramen Noodle, whose brother from Frisco was visiting, and the multifamily housing, uh, problems that we have. Just 56 units for multifamily? We got a population, as Donald Trump pointed out in Iowa, this is a serious day of defeat against the Democrats. So the crossing apartments at this adoption, it's apparent. But let me go to item, uh, 4 now. Uh, no, skip 4, let's go to item number 5 now. Yeah. CD 11, prohibiting the parking of oversized vehicles on the basis of discrimination, racial profiling, and assault against people of color, and that means the homeless. The majority of people on the street are dark-skinned like myself, and this city continues without recommendation to solve the homeless crisis. Look at Ms. Ramen Noodle with her hand on her head. She knows it's true. Kevin DeLeon won't even look up because he knows it's true. He's been fighting this issue all along when he got Mr. Garcia a room within 72 hours. Hip, hip, hooray for you, DeLeon. Good job. And then we go into the Los Angeles municipal code 80.69.4. I think that's a bunch of bullshit. Really a bunch of bullshit. Gonna push more people into other neighborhoods because current price lied about his marriage in Hawaii, right? But these 22 feet in length, over 7 feet in height, is ridiculous during the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM.
So Mr. Herman, you've used your 1 minute on this item, please move on to another item.
Pardon me, sir? Yeah, I'm talking about item 5. I got 18 seconds and you continue to answer up.
You've used your 1 minute on that item, so please move on to another item.
All right. CD, uh, 15, uh, item 15, for the, for the last of the time, fuck you.
Fucking hit?
Uh, yes.
Next speaker.
Right.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Right. That's right, the politically correct black puppet in the house here. I want to speak on all motherfucking item available.
So you have 3 minutes for the items, please begin.
Yeah, that's right. Now let's get to number 5, shame on Tracy Park, formerly known as Tracy Beach. I've been trying to sell my crack out of my RV down there at the beach, try to raise some money for my baby mamas, and that bitch is trying to take and evict me out of my RV. 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, that's the time I sell my most valuable clients. That's where I get all the cops, the former district attorneys, and politicians. I sell very good, and remember, you can get a discount at my RV by simply saying T-Park, I'll give you 10% off any crack rock. Well, thank you for that. Yeah, thank you. Then we get to the sum of this bullshit, that big old fat lady. Uh, number 5, fucking lean, where is that? Where, there's a lean, and, and, and it, and it, oh, that's number 4. Oh, number 4, that big old fat Hebrew woman, goddamn sitting there on Cherokee Avenue, $2,400? Why you goddamn Israelites? You, I'm gonna tell Hamas, I'm gonna tell Hezbollah about item number 4. You stealing from all those people to fund your fucking war and genocide. And I want Tracy Park and I want Unisis, who's sitting there drinking that bad soda for her, to deny number 4. And I also want Nithya Ramen, who's doing business as Noodle Ronnie, to also deny number 4. I bought that. That's right. And we wanna thank Nithya Ramen Noodle that continually sells out her soul. Uh, number 1, sitting there, street engineering dedication, what a pile of shit. She just trying to raise money to try to defeat that white attorney Weaver, who they're having a debate tonight.
Mr. Spindler, this is not on the agenda, so please stick to the agenda items.
Well, yeah, bucket head, I, I know you don't like that, but, uh, yeah, this guy here likes it. I like it. That's right. Now let's turn to other shit here. Yeah, you got that big black cop there gonna mess me up here. So number 11, we got CD 10, well, that's the fake councilwoman. At Heather Hood ain't no goddamn councilwoman. She didn't face the electors. So why the fuck is she making decisions inside the seat belonging to Dr. Mark Ridley Thomas, civil rights leader? Why isn't he in the chair? Because that petty pink-skinned dictator up there put her in his chair in violation of the law and the city attorney-
So, Mr. Spindler, your time has almost up, but this is not on the agenda either.
And these black motherfucking cops are proving, that's right. Finally, fuck you, I'll be back later. Yes, thank you so much.
Uh, danielgust.substack.com for identification purposes only.
Which items, Mr. Gus, would you like to speak to?
I'm, 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 I'm telling you, in case somebody else uses my name. Uh, all items and coming back later for general.
We have 3 minutes.
Great, thank you. Um, in terms of item number 2, this is danielgust.substack.com. Item number 2, Ms. Ramen, uh, is talks of all about equity, 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 and socialism. Well, how many of the students who would go to this school on Mulholland Drive, wink, wink, would be under-income, inner-city, uh, uh, black, Latino, uh, transgender LGBTQ? So socialist, uh, Ms. Ramen, Mr. Sorta Martinez, Ms. Hernandez, how is the equity of this property on Mulholland Drive going to be used with equity so that no matter what, the student population at this school reflects the color and demographics of Los Angeles? Stand up one of you, Ms. Ramen perhaps, tell us, what about equity for this property on Mulholland Drive, or stop talking about it. Ethan Weaver, I hope you're paying attention, I'd love to speak with you about this. Item number 5, hey, this is a great idea, but why are you even allowing non-roadworthy motorhomes to be on our streets altogether? Wouldn't it be smarter to find places for people who live in them and make sure that these hazards are off the street? Why are you cherry picking this block, this location between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM? If you people represent all of us, why are you allowing dangerous uninhabitable motorhomes to be on our streets at any time? And why are you doing it on certain streets at certain times? Tell us that. Why aren't you acting collectively? This is a great idea, by the way, but it's, it, 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 it's crumbs instead of a meal here. Fix the problem of these dangerous motorhomes and get those people inside, and if they don't want to go inside, you don't let them stay here in the gutters endangering our streets and endangering themselves.
Mr. Gus, you've used your 1 minute on this item, please move on to another item.
Those, yeah, tho- those motorhomes blow up, a- as I have shown. Uh, regarding, um, item num- or the parking thing, what is that? Item number 15? Hey, or whatever it is, why are you allowing and facilitating the parking of 175 more vehicles? Why aren't you using this money to incentivize people to not take those 175 vehicles, uh, uh, on the road and polluting our air, which is what you talk about? But why are you facilitating more parking? How come you're not saying, hey, we're gonna give you each $100 a month, take public transportation, and we'll pay for the public transportation too?
Mr. Gus, your time has expired.
Thank you, next caller, please.
All items, please.
Okay, so you have 3 minutes for the items, please begin.
Cool. Uh, my name is Stacy, I'm also a smoking can viewer. Um, let me start with number 2, um, this motion from Ramen and Jaroslavski, um, regarding bonds for acquisition, construction installation renovation, yada, 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 new learning and innovation center on Mulholland Drive. Um, I'm just curious, um, you know, does Mulholland Drive need a lot of help compared to other places in District 2? I don't know. I like the idea. Um, but I, I think that residents who live on or near Mulholland maybe could fund something like this on their own. I thought the private sector was, you know, supposed to be leading the way with things on these. I don't know why this is coming out of tax year dollars, but I could be wrong. Maybe this is, um, a rough part of Mulholland Drive. I don't know. Um, moving on to, let me go to, um, we'll do number 3, I guess. Um, issuance of multifamily housing revenue, bonds, new construction, multifamily housing projects. Um, you know, it's cool to get these things in the works, but in the meantime, it's called outside right now, and there's people dying right now, and there's, um, more than 2 vacancies for every unhoused resident in the city of Los Angeles. So, um, when we had a motion yesterday to designate a parcel of land as surplus so that we could sell it off, um, but then we're also seeing, you know, what's, what's being called a housing shortage. I don't understand why we're sacrificing public resources, um, and then, you know, dragging our feet on actually housing the unhoused because we want to build something new instead of using what we have. We can do both. Um, and then there's, um, item 5, which, um, the caller that spoke before said we just need to cite them and tow them away. Um, caller, I just want to let you know, you're talking about people's homes. Um, I don't know how you would feel if you were in a situation to be living in a van or a camper in the city, but, um, but I don't know, maybe if someone finds your home ugly, it should be towed away from wherever you decided to live. What makes you so special that you get to pick wherever you want to live, but these poor people are being criminalized because they couldn't afford rent, so they started living out of a vehicle? Um, and studies show that these types of approaches to things like, um, vehicle unhoused residents, unhoused residents who are staying in vehicles on the streets, um, criminalizing their existence, um, doesn't help. It just makes their lives more difficult and causes them to move around in other places of the city. Um, we need safe places for these people to go, safe places for them to park, services, um, like showers and laundry, um, and then we need to get them into housing. So I'll see you soon for general public comment.
Herman and Spindler, good morning.
Hey. We're getting a little tired of your broken promises, promises. Council member Ramen voting on KDL's motions. When it's time to up a sworn overtime for police, Nithya agrees to an LAPD funding increase. You go around saying you're reforming your government, but when he breaks the rules, you won't call out your president, impeding the public's access to present comments. Then you run away, Nithya, please. No, you're not the one. The residents of CD for what? We'd be better off with Baronian. You can try, but you won't, won't. Win the vote, win the vote, vote. Oh, no, Nithya, you are gonna lose your seat. You can try, you can lie, lie. You can run, but you can't hide. Nithya Ramen, you are gonna lose your seat. Oh, by the way, fuck you, Kevin.
Next speaker.
Good morning. Good morning, Richard Serrano, write-in candidate for CD 6. Been, uh, thank you, Mr. Candido, he's been setting up a lot of meetings in the neighborhood in CD 6 and attending them. Last night, Emilda Padilla shows up to the meeting and her staff, but when the neighborhood council started speaking, they were gone. It was vote for me, I'm Emilda, and out the door. Should've stuck around and listened to the problems in the neighborhood. My problem is that the one thing that they did bring up, imminent public domain, from the state level to here in city chamber, you're supposed to represent them. How are you allowing them to build a soft rail in the neighborhood that serves nobody in that community? Brick and mortar businesses, gonna be shut down, no, nowhere to park. And the people, the stakeholders that own houses, shut down. You gotta think about the people you were starting to represent when you ran for office, not when the election time comes up.
Thank you, next speaker.
Harriet Elliott. Um, I was a mother with a substance abuse problem and my son was taken away from me. I talked to you one time before that after I got sober and when I was graduating from CSUN, uh, my son just happened to die. It wasn't a, uh, a coincidence at all. He was killed, and I was trying to say the CIA works in strange ways. Akway, I call him Awesome Akway, he, when he talks, everything he says is, uh, national security. He's not, you're not allowed to repeat what Akway says. And, um, he says they work, the CIA works like the, uh, they, uh, work, uh, anyway, they have killed people besides my son. They, and, uh, mm-hmm, yeah. I'm gonna, uh, come here, uh, with the people who have been killed and talk about it each time.
Good morning, Sean.
Yeah, good morning, how you doing? Few things, few events coming up here in downtown LA. Once the Pro-Life March, February 4th, the stunt car race, uh, I wish people would, would get vaccinated. Most people are not vaccinated, that's why I'm wearing a, put the mask back on. Just be careful who you approach. These sidewalk's need to be still, we still have homeless in the, in the damn red line subway system. They're still sleeping out in the, on the train stations. No, nobody's doing, nobody's doing shit about it. Nobody's doing anything about this. We need to do something about this crap.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
All right, as we all know, it's at or near the beginning of the meeting at this point, right? Right, Unisis? The one who should've called a point of order 3 months, like a month ago when he started this whole crap. Um, so we can get a full vote of the council to see what you all think of having the meeting at the end, general public comment at the end of the meeting? Because this is not at or near the beginning of the meeting. Um, and you all know that, and you're just, all just letting Paul just, you know, laterally decide what he feels like the rules should be. Um, because I guess you all, um, think that he can just do whatever he wants, and, you know, it's up to you to enforce his, the rules and make him comply, but, but you're not gonna do that. Because apparently the council rules only apply to, um, the people that Paul doesn't like out in the audience. Um, they don't actually apply to him, and you, you don't have to fore- tell him he has to follow them, and, you know, you're all just gonna sit alongside Kevin DeLeon, the known racist, not tell him to resign, none of that stuff.
Next speaker, please.
Kevin can't help that shit though. See, that's the thing, yeah. So all items and general comment again. So again, join us at 5056 Van Nuys Boulevard tonight as you see that skunk, Nithya Ramen Noodle, go against Ethan Weaver, the next city council member, as we press the eject button on that dumb skinny bitch and get her out of our lives. Yes, sir. And then we had sleazy current price. Now where in the fuck are those public records? How many marriage licenses do you think he has? Let's do it.
Mr. Spindler, speak with words.
Kevin, how many marriage licenses do you think that current price has? 4? You're wrong. Answer's 3. That's right. I got 2 of them, I need the other one. Help me, Mr. Pumpkinhead, get that FOIA request. That motherfucking lie-
Next speaker.
Time has expired.
So bucket heads, if you're not listening, the fact of the matter is, what is the hyperbole of this horseshoe? Well, the hyperbole of this horseshoe is that it's a bunch of nonsense. We know that Ramen Noodle's gonna lose in her debate tonight. We know that there's gonna be criticism about it because she supports, you know, this Beverly Hills bullshit that doesn't mean a damn thing for making everyone's life any better or a situation any clearer. That homelessness is a California crisis, and that's the reason why we need Donald Trump and those of us to support Donald Trump to defeat California, defeat the rule of these Democrats that have ruined this country, that have ruined this state, and created the Holocaust of homelessness throughout the city of Los Angeles. Don't be ashamed. Come and vote, we need you back.
Put your sign up for the rules, your time has expired. Next speaker, uh, no, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, next speaker, please.
Mike Greenspan. Now, there's another debate tonight too, and it's in District 2, and that's for the open seat because our council president is termed out. And it'll be at 5,000 Colfax, that's near Hezby, in Valley Village Neighborhood Council, Caldwell Hall, Faith Presbyterian Church. It's 7 o'clock, 6:45 for refreshments, and just thought people would like to know, anyone listening, you have a chance to make your plans tonight and go to the debate. Now, a neighbor of mine has done teaching in Burbank, and she told me a story about, uh, an Armenian mom told her son, that guy comes from the other side of the river, punch him in the nose. So this might be 2 Armenian candidates on different sides of the river, river politics in Armenia.
Thank you.
All right, uh, item 2, I have to do this. Dimwit idiot, Nithya Ramen announcing that her brother's in town is for the building of a $28 million educational facility. This is illegal and not allowed by the city charter. It is illegal. I'm doing this real quick. Number 3, for the ground-up construction of 56 units at the cost of $20,500,000. That is just over $379,000 per unit, public. Just $379,000 per unit. Now contract this item's building cost to the corrupt, criminal, sleazy council looting of the 1.2 million dollars, billion dollars of the HH bond fund. Uh, in my opinion, the item should receive a no vote because I believe that part of the $20 million of the funds to build these units will be embezzled into criminally indicted current prices personally business, personal business by Clue Clutch Grekorian if current price is allowed to vote on this item. Number 4, for the placing of another nuisance and abatement lien on a piece of property owned-
Caller, your 1 minute has expired.
Yes, my name is Jason, I'm a smoking can beaver.
Okay, so you have 1 minute, please begin.
Uh, no, I'm cool, I just wanted, um, somebody to make a mess in the bathroom, there's shit all over the place. I wanted to get a little toilet paper, get a dinner down here, get some of this shit up. That would be appreciated. You later?
Sir, do you have any other comments? This is, your 1 minute for general public comment is going.
Oh, that's all, they just need a dinner or somebody, maybe Corin got a little time, he can come up here and, you know, get some of this shit off the toilet and all over the walls, that'd be appreciated, that's.
All right, thank you, next speaker, please.
Speaker, you have 1 minute. Call-in user 2.
Next caller, please.
Caller, you have 1 minute.
Before, caller, before you begin, Mr. Spindler, to the extent that that was you, do not call in from these chambers and rub your phone up and down against your leg. I've seen you multiple times, coincidentally, while these noises are being made, moving your arm furiously, and it looks like you're using your phone. So please do not do so. Sorry, caller.
And, wait, before the caller begins, for clarity, that warning does not apply only to Mr. Spindler. Anybody here who disrupts this meeting using audiovisual means, using their phones, shouting out, or in any other way disrupts the work of this meeting, will be excluded. So that warning applies to everyone. Caller, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, danielgust.substack.com. Ms. Hernandez, while you're sitting there, did you see Channel 4 last night? Joel Grover did a report on animal services, not going up to animals being tethered, which is illegal, without food, water, shelter, which is illegal, not being spayed, which is illegal. Ms. Hernandez, I had a lengthy, uh, conversation with Yvette Serna just as you took office, and I brought this to your attention, and others brought this to your attention. Well, now it's on Channel 4 with Joel Grover, Ms. Hernandez. You're in charge of this, this is your ballgame, you're dropping the ball, and for some reason- your ballgame. You're dropping the ball. And for some reason, Mayor Bass is now denying that, that she ordered animal services not to get involved in these situations. This is on you, Ms. Hernandez. And I guess there are a certain mandate because your general manager, Stacey Gaines, has been making multi-hour conversations to the people who've been complaining about her.
Thank you. Next caller, please.